That's cool.
It is. Two oh three. Apologies for the delay, but the Brazos County Commissioners Court Budget Workshop will continue here on day four.
Good afternoon. Hope everybody had a wonderful lunch break. We still have two remaining divisions that we're going to discuss, or two departments. Under the Facility Services, there are three. One's his administrative portion of it, landscaping, and then, of course, Wonderful Parking Garage, which is probably new to him, so I might go into a little bit more detail about that if they don't want to. For the administration budget, they decreased by $150,000, which is a negative 2%, but overall it's 2.37% compared to the budget. And then landscaping, we decreased it by 16,000. Same thing, negative 2%. Overall budget is .27. And parking garage, of course, it's increased because it came online this year with our portion of the payments, and so we'll go into detail about that. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to Facility Services to go over their budget.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your patience in coming back this afternoon.
You bet. No problem. Ernest Stutz, Brazos County Facility Services Director. This is my assistant, Matt Mayo. I just want to say real quick, all my years that I've been here, I've never been referred to as Mr. Wonderful like Charles Went has. So my hat's off to him to retain his title. And there's been plenty of opportunities for that. Our shifts start at 6:00 a.m. and ends at midnight every day, so there's plenty of time for people to find problems with us. As you see, we didn't really increase anything operational-wise. We were able to trim some fat in some areas and add some to others. Our biggest thing that we see coming up in the future years is just cost of parts. A quick example, like the chiller that's sitting outside.
Will you say that one more time?
The cost of parts.
Thank you.
Like the chiller sitting outside at the employee entrance, those condenser motors used to be $500, $600. Now they're $3,400. We've just seen every year 10, 15% cost increase on parts. And that's everything. Not just, you know, Facility Services, just landscape as well, and parts for belts, mowers, blades, everything. So I don't know if you had any questions about any of the actual categories that we increased or decreased?
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Before he continues?
Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to Matt. He has a couple of projects to talk to. They're in our handout, and would ask for maybe your consideration on those items, just a little more information about what they are and what the needs are.
Ernest, will you come back to the mic, or are you gonna?
I certainly can, if you have any questions.
I just want to say thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marvelous.
Thank you.
Mr. Marvelous, you now have a title.
I'll take it.
My name is Matt Mayo, Facility Services Assistant Director.
There's two items. We're gonna need a Mr. Marvelous.
The, there's two items that were not included in our budget request for fiscal year 2026. The first one is the HVAC control upgrade and the parking lot striping. The first one is gonna be the, if you'll turn to the number 11 yellow page, you'll see that there was a $35,000 estimation for it. We have received a quote back, and that quote is 85,000.
Wow, 85,000?
Yes. The purpose of the upgrade is to give us control and add to our train control system in accordance to county standardization system. Control systems provide equipment feedback and zone control of the building, and is another tool in our belt. It gives early warning of mechanical failures and allows for more punctual early response during most inopportune times systems will go down. One of the most important tools is a functioning control system. Parts of the system are offline or malfunctioning. From day one of our occupancy of the adult probation or the CSCD building, access went through the Brazos Transit District. Those with access have moved on and passwords were lost. The original contractor has gone out of business. After conflicts of timing and postponed trips to Brazos County, the individual capable of hacking into the control system made his way around it. After exploring the control system, it has resulted that the discovery of two of the three J600 Java application control engine modules were able to be seen, and half of the equipment is not visible on the control system. And as it determined that the time it would take to fix it would not be cost-effective utilizing the outdated software engines. The system we would like to replace it with has provided the county service second to none. Proposed new system is fully expandable and will accommodate any remodels or design changes in the future. The quote that I was referring to, we received on January 31, 2025, in that total of $85,000. And we would like you to consider that for adding it to our budget in the fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Okay, the second item, if you'll turn to page 16, in the yellow tabs, that is the parking lot striping. Many of, many of the parking lot have limited to no visibility of space marking and ADA-required markings that are hard to see, faded. Parking lot markings, also known as striping, are crucial for guiding traffic, ensuring safety, and maintaining order within a parking lot. They designate parking spaces, direct traffic flow, and identify pedestrian walkways, contributing to a more organized and safe environment. Handicap parking lot markings serve to clearly designate accessible parking spaces, ensuring that they are reserved for individuals with disabilities, and providing adequate space for safe entry and exit. These markings include international symbols of accessibility and comply with the ADA Act, and related regulations promoting inclusivity and preventing misuse. Average cost of a typical parking lot striping for 98 spaces is $6,000. We have 10.
Did you say 98 spaces?
98 spaces.
But these are all counted facilities?
No, that's just one facility. The one referenced is the last one we just got done doing. It is at the William Joe Bryan and the North Washington Avenue Public Parking, brought by the courthouse and Employee Clinic and voter registration.
Because I know Brazos Center is in need of some work.
Yes. It's also included in one of these, but that total could go down if that's done externally from Facility Services. Those that are needing more work are the Record Storage, the Health District, and the Juvenile Detention, because the asphalt is ravelling and would need further repairs. If you'll like, take a look at the pictures, you'll see some of the typical conditions of the parking spaces. The one, the first one is the Juvenile Detention Center, which.
Which tab you in?
I'm in tab number 16.
This one looks like it's the Health Department.
Yes. There is, there is some from the Health Department, the Sheriff's Office, and two sides of the Juvenile Detention Center.
Yep, yep, I agree.
These are just to bring the field to the courtroom, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at.
That's terrible. Any questions? Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Mayo?
Your pictures say it all.
Yeah, well, I've seen it visually personally, because that's why I was able to identify, because I've been in those parking lots.
Mr. Mayo, thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Ernest, once again, thank you for all you've done for Brazos County.
Absolutely.
And with that being said, I want to go over some of the projects that are in the capital, in the budget that Facility Services has requested. It's a little bit over 1.7 million, so you can kind of understand those projects. One project is to replace the 40-ton HVAC package.
Before you, you don't have a.
No, I'm reading an email, so I had to find it.
40-10?
It's a 40-ton HVAC package unit replacement at the Health District. Estimated cost is $200,000. Keep in mind, this is the county's building. We do not share this cost with other entities, like the cities, and so this is our cost. This HVAC unit supplies 80% of that building, and so if it goes down, then we pretty much will have to close down the whole Health Department to get it fixed, and so this is a priority. Another one is water heater replacement at the courthouse. This is the item that is coming out of courthouse facilities. We've received funding that can only be used for certain things, and so this will be covered with that fee. Another item is the water heater replacement at Juvenile, $80,000. I'm watching everybody write, so I'll slow down a little bit. The next one is located at the jail is to replace Housing Unit 3 and Housing Unit 4 hydronic boiler replacement. That's $600,000.
600.
Mm-hmm. RTU, fire damper replacements at the, at Juvenile. I'm glad you're sitting down, $841,371.
What's RTU?
What's an RTU?
Rooftop unit.
Oh, yeah. So those items are included in next year's budget. I know when we're looking at the jail and the courthouse, we're doing, we're looking at the deferred maintenance project, but by that time that we get those answers back, some of these projects are priorities, and they do need to be fixed next year. And so again, that's 1.7 million that's included in next year's budget. What Facility Services is asking is to go above and beyond and add those two additional projects they just described to you. And this is where we would like to know if we need to move forward with the striping contract out for the parking lot striping, as well as the CSD HVAC controllers. Keep in mind that when adult probation moves out to the new building at 101, that building will be vacant. It might take us two years. It could be replaced then, and we could just kind of limp along, or it could be revamped now.
Commissioners' thoughts?
Do you think it can limp along?
I do. No, I don't, seriously, I don't know.
Ernest?
A little bit of history on that. You know, this has been talked about, the county taking over that facility for several years, I don't know, four, five years. Yeah, it's been, it's been quite a while. We had plans back then to replace the system so we could have access to it, because even back then, we knew we didn't, and we couldn't find anybody that could access the system. So we've been planning on this for four, five years. The price as you have, you see, has gone up every year for what it would cost to fix it. So if we wait longer, it could go up. We have made it this far without it, so it's certainly something we could manage if we had to, but eventually it's gonna need to be done one way or the other.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what building this is.
The CID building, or adult probation parking garage. And that does the bus terminal side and the CDCD side. So it's something we could make work if we needed to.
But you said, Nina, with 101 North, that gets, that space is vacated?
Right. Well, the plan is to move the adult probation to 101, but it might, you know, be two years, and so I don't know if we can last that long or not. And then once the CSD moves over, we're gonna have to renovate for the potential move the DA's office in that building. So there will be renovation that will need to be completed, and this could be all done at the same time. I don't know if we could last that long with this.
So we can limp along, we're hopeful we make the two years, we know we can make one.
So you'd say do nothing until we're doing the full renovation?
It is a suggestion. I'm not making.
Suggestion that we, we need to make.
Yeah.
Up here on the dais.
I'm all for limping along and doing the striping, but limping along on the other.
Doing the striping, limping along, okay. So let me ask, I want to ask Ernest.
No, we had two options on the striping, right? Do it ourselves or outsource it? Is that what I heard? Or is that one choice?
No, they don't have it.
It's, it's really more than we can do in-house, the amount of parking spaces that there is.
So it's, it's gonna be subbed out regardless?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the estimate on that was the 85 or 100?
100,000.
100.
That's a rough estimation.
Okay. Rough as in high to come in low?
Hopefully.
Okay.
If something happens at the HVAC or CSD building, is it easy to replace within like a day or two, or is it lead time that would take a month, or do you have to shut the whole building down if something goes down?
If that system goes down, there's a possibility that the equipment will, will cease to run, because that's what tells it to come on and come off. So that is one of the issues that we have to be concerned with.
I'm sorry, you're speaking.
Yeah, sir.
There you go.
Sorry. The, the concern is, is if that system does go down, it, it tells those air conditioning
and heating units to come on and also come off, and if it fails to bring them on, then we lose that conditioning in those spaces.
How quick can you replace that?
It depends on the lead time, on the parts required to update it. Pulling new wire and also putting the controls in place, and control cabinets, and then doing all the landing of wiring in every unit that is being controlled.
So we're pretty much operating on a hope and a prayer?
Correct. It's autonomously running by the set points that were set from day one.
Well, in fact, if we renovate this building, if we upgraded it now, will we have to redo the, redo to additional, you know, space, third floor? I mean, I don't know.
The control system is upgradable for the future, for building or redesign of the, of the system or the space. It's more than capable of being updated 300 times what it is now, with the new, it's expandable.
You mean, if you put in a new system, it would be expandable?
It is expandable, yes.
So if we do it now, we could configure it how we need in a couple of years for new use?
Yes.
If we don't do it now, we run the risk of kind of catastrophic failure?
Correct. It's a tough one.
Yeah.
Okay, the court needs all the information we can get. I think we have an opportunity to hear from our project manager as well at this time. Trevor, would you let some light, just so we can make an accurate decision? Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think by and large, you guys have the, the majority of the info here. I think, I mean, it's been running that way since day one. It could crater at any time, but it might not. We carry contingency for these exact reasons. Yeah, there'd be some downtime, and we'd have to figure out a potential situation to handle that, but we've got really good staff, and I think, I feel pretty comfortable that we could come up with something. I think the rooftop unit itself is the same age. Yeah, so I mean, the actual mechanical equipment is just as old as a control system, and so at any, you know, anything could happen, and it's hard to, it's hard to budget for the, the exception to the rule, or whatever that might be, and so it's kind of up to y'all to decide at what level of risk you'd like to operate.
So if the system were to fail, we could have a day or two or longer of.
It'd definitely be longer if the, if the entire system failed, whether it be the air handler or the control system itself.
People would not be able to work in that building, probably, especially right now.
Yeah, and I'm in the summer, that's for sure.
Trevor, thank you. I hope that shed more light, but I'm not sure.
There was, one other item I wanted to touch on, the striping. We are bidding out.
Striping for the Brazos Center.
Striping for the Brazos. Striping for the Brazos Center is currently...
Mr. Wint is on his way up as well.
Is currently out for bid as part of a package to fix the parking lot.
Mr. Wonderful? Mr. Wint?
Trying to get your steps in, that's why you sit way back there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, we have, we currently have a contract for striping, so we can handle, if it's just that piece, we can already handle that with an existing contract that we have for our county roads and all. We're bidding it out as part of the, the project at the Brazos Center, because there's so many other components to that, so we can handle the striping via our contracts we already have in place.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Wint. Questions for Mr. Wint?
Thank you, Mr. Wonderful.
Wonderful, marvelous, miraculous.
You know you're never going to live that down.
Ms. Payne?
I'm Nina No-Pain, no. I just, what, what are your thoughts? Do we move forward?
So the striping's taken care of, from what I understand, to a certain extent.
Right, but I still have to budget the money for it to happen, and so do y'all want me proceed in adding the $100,000 into their budget? Or...
Commissioners?
Yeah.
Sure.
If they, if they send process and...
I have some yeses up here.
Okay, and what about the HVAC upgrades?
I think we have to let it.
We're going to hope and pray?
Yeah. Limp along for another year. Yeah.
With the understanding that those folks will be moved, and we will redo the entire building in one to two to three years.
We should run and stand over there and fan everybody.
We'll use your little fan right there.
Thank you, Mrs. Payne. Ernest, Matt, thank you.
One more quick thing.
Please.
Since we're not going to do the controls, we will start working on a contingency plan if it does go down. There are some options that we maybe can override.
Have in place.
We can maybe wire around some things, maybe manually operate some of the, you know, it might be a little tough, but we, we'll start working on a contingency plan. If something happens, we'll, we'll know what to do next.
Thank you for the willingness to do that. We appreciate it.
Next up is...
Thus, you've earned your nicknames.
I want to come up with something cool. Okay, for landscaping, y'all want to kind of go into detail about landscaping right quick? The budget? Nothing? Do you have any questions regarding the landscaping budget?
No.
Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
No, it went down. We saved a little money. So the one that went up is the parking garage. This is where we're increasing the budget by $71,000. This is because we have to have insurance on the building, we have to have pest control, we have to have fire prevention. We, a lot of contracts that are going to this building that Commissioners Court has approved, and so this is the, this is an estimate. I do not know how much it's going to cost to run this whole building for a full year, and so this is a good start for us to begin the new year with.
Any questions about parking garage?
No.
Nope.
No, thank you.
And the next up is going to be records management, increase to the budget $11,000, which is the two, the cost of living essentially. And I'll ask Desmond to come up to explain his budget.
Good afternoon. I'm Desmond from Records Management. Not much change here at all. The only change is I have a decrease of how much?
6,400.
6,400.
6,400. That decreases because we had that there, because I was replacing all of our scanners. All of the scanners have been replaced. I have one more to purchase, which we have enough to do that. Other than that, there isn't any changes in our, not much there to see, not much there to change.
Thank you. That's, boy, that's sweet.
Any questions? Any questions for Desmond?
Thanks, Desmond.
Desmond, thank you.
Mr. Delightful?
You're welcome.
Okay, so that is, that, that concludes all the departments under general government. I wanted everybody to understand what the true function and who is in that function, because a lot of people do not know. Regarding the total government function, yes, it is a $54 million budget for next year, but we also decreased it by 14%. So that's a good thing.
That's great.
If you want to look at the past history, this is the budget for 2022 for general government, 63 million. 2024, 50 million. We jumped back up to 2025, 63 million, and we went down to 54. Keep in mind, a lot of these that we're going through are one-time-only costs, furniture, laptops for new people, HVAC replacements, and so that's why you kind of see a little roller coaster ride. $8.7 million decrease. Each function that we'll go over, I'll explain this, and then we'll get to the bottom dollar to where I can show you where that, where that's coming from. Okay? That's it. Until tomorrow.
Justice system, or?
Tomorrow, we will go over the justice system, which is going to be your judicial courts, court support, court-appointed attorneys, that kind of thing. JP's.
Thank you so much. Great work.
Nina, thank you. Nina, thank you. Spencer, thank you. Everybody that presented today, well done.
Absolutely.
We are now adjourned from the Commissioners Court Budget Workshop, day four.
See you tomorrow.